Unfortunately, they're not together, but there you go. I really called you out on that one. Prior to our meeting starting this evening, we do have an invocation. So Pastor Vanderlinden is here from Ebenezer Moravian Church, and I'd invite you up.
Thank you. I'll invite us to take a good evening's prayer. You're welcome to here this evening to make decisions, to have ideas, to bring about thoughts, to bring about discussion. I'm reminded of what our Moravian Book of Worship does. We pray for those who are engaged in making important decisions in this time, for those who report on these events, and for those who shape public opinion. Give them the courage to speak out and the restraint to listen, that together we may discern the truth and hold a law in sight. Blessed. To the one who created us, we welcome you. The one who loves us, we thank you. The one who guides us, we move. To the one who shapes us, we embrace. Hold your love. The one who listens, we give voice. The one who encourages, we speak. The one who reminds us that all of life is precious, diversity is beautiful, and that the opinions and such decisions and discussions tonight are worthwhile and worthy. We thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to listen, to share and to give advice, to welcome, to uphold, to uplift at this time in which decisions and challenges in the world seems crazier than ever. You would be thankful for the bridges we can build, for the connections we can make, for the welcoming we can provide. May this evening be alight, be filled with good discussion, wonderful consideration, thoughtful discernment, and much grace. The name to whoever we pray to, amen.
Thank you. All right. I think we're good on sound. Whoever feels comfortable turning on that microphone between the three of you, the one at the ... I told you. I told you, Mike. It's like, I'm gonna turn this thing on, and then it won't be on. All right, are we good, Megan? There we go. All right, thank you. With that, I am going to call to order our Tuesday, July 16th, Common Council Meeting. Megan, will you please take the role?
Davis?
Here.
Lampy?
Here.
Board?
Here.
Barts?
Here.
Blanke?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Wetzel?
Here.
Mildenhauer?
Here.
Very good. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from July 2nd. Anybody have any comments or questions on those? All right, then let's move to comments and suggestions from citizens present. Again, for those of you I didn't speak to, we do have three public hearings. If you are here for those, I would just ask you to wait to that public hearing, but if anyone else is here to comment, please step up to the microphone, or Megan?
Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross, 432 West Clover Cottage Grove.
Good evening. As you heard, my name is Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross, and although I live in Cottage Grove, I work and serve here in Watertown as pastor of First Congregational United Church of Christ. My pronouns are E., F., and S. I'm here tonight to invite you to this year's Watertown Pride event, scheduled for July 27th, from 10:00 to 4:00. The event will be held at First Congregational UCC this year. The event is being held in our church because, as we seek to follow Jesus as disciples in loving others, we are willing to do what city leaders were too afraid to do. Stand against bigotry and welcome all of God's children, they gather in joy and freedom, and to truly be themselves. You also are welcome to join us, to support the members of your community whom you claim to serve.
Thank you. And that microphone is 100% not on. Someone wanna take another peek? It says it's green. Will you tap it? Like tap? Okay, thank you. Thankfully, you're a pastor, and you have that projecty voice, so I think it worked just fine, but are we good? Will you tap the end of the microphone? Yeah.
If you've been to one of our meetings, you know this is pretty normal, no matter
what we do ahead of time. The microphone doesn't work. Oh, is that one good? Okay, all right. Well, I'm gonna call it now that likely will last for some period of time, but will probably go out. So with that, let's move to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is for 1310 Alworth Street. This is a proposed comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use category from institutional to multifamily residential. I will open that public hearing. If any would like to comment, you can come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Mike Hoppin-Rath, 1302 Newcastle Court. My comments apply to both public hearings, so you only have to listen to me once. Whether city staff or developers, believe it or not, I do appreciate the time they spent trying to make this palatable to us, but I am not in support of this rezoning or land use change at all. I think the eight 16-unit apartment buildings are gonna be completely out of place in this parcel. I'm not in favor of using TIF money to subsidize the school offer to purchase or anything else in this development. I think the single-family condo lots are way too small. My neighbor could have four individual houses on his back line alone, and I think that's just not reasonable. And people seem to think that if this development doesn't go in, there'll be no assessed value increase. My estimation is if we make this single-family, you'd still have minimum $12 million increase from 45 to 50 single-family houses, which I think is reasonable. So for all these reasons, I ask that you vote against this when it comes before you in whatever meeting that may be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Carol Hoppin-Rath, Mike's wife, 1302 Newcastle Court, and I agree with what he says.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Schultz?
Most of you probably know me, but I'm Tom Schultz, 1207 Douglas Avenue. I'm president of Mary Rose Subdivision Incorporated, the developer of the Mary Rose subdivision out by M A T C on the city's west side, and also Grandview Heights subdivision adjacent to the 20-acre parcel we're talking about tonight. In those two subdivisions, over 400 single-family homes have been developed through our family's work over the last 30, 40 years. I'm opposed to the density of units being proposed. Yes, Watertown needs additional housing, and I think everybody understands that, but at the same time, it needs to be the kind that can easily coexist with the over 200 single-family homes we've developed in Grandview Heights. These homes, each and every one, is a single-family home. Each of them has a market value now of $300,000 and up. Some are 400, we have a couple that are almost $500,000, a couple that are over $500,000. Having that kind of density on this 20-acre parcel will certainly be a detriment to all the people who purchased these lots and houses in good faith, expecting a single-family development. I recall not that long ago, when the developer of this 20-acre parcel first came to the city, they were told to go back and redesign the layout, and I thought it was to be with less density and some buffers. And it's the same density, nothing has changed, just the location on the property. For example, the units nearest the existing single-family homes on Meadowbrook Drive, Newcastle Court, and Windsor Circle could be zoned for duplexes, and that'd be a nice little buffer. And then inward from there, maybe a tier of three or four family units, and then finally a few bigger units in the center that would shield everybody from it. And I think that that's the kind of thing the council needs to look at. First, you turn this down, and then you work at less density. And I understand the school district wants, you know, the most money they can get for it, but the most money is not necessarily what's best for the city of Watertown. We simply need to have less density than being proposed in this 20-acre parcel. Thank you for my time, giving me the time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donald Donovan. I live at 1420 Timber Ridge Trail. I'm here to speak about these two proposals, and I am opposed to them. I think that changing this to multifamily of this nature would overwhelm the infrastructure of the area. I believe that it would be out of place, out of character, and change the character of the greater neighborhood development. And I believe that it doesn't represent the highest and best use for the property or for the best interest for the city to extend a TIF, which would mean really no return as far as tax base goes for an extended period of time to accomplish a sale for the public schools when the public schools is a different entity. I mean, that's, as far as the city's concerned, it's a private entity. So why would we want the city to change the zoning here and change the character of the neighborhood for essentially a private entity with no foreseeable return to the city? And yet, that type of multifamily would create a high use on the infrastructure, whether that be the schools, the roads, the services of the city. So therefore, I'm opposed to this, and I would hope that you would vote the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stangler?
Hello, I'm Robert Stangler. I didn't realize the density was gonna be so bad here. In fact, I hadn't seen anything on it, so I can't make a judgment whether you should proceed or not with this particular request. I am opposed to use, opposed to using TIF money for private enterprise. My main reason I'm here is I own 1225 North Fourth Street, and I just wanna make sure when I finally get that project done, it's not gonna interfere with the sewage or the utilities gonna be able to handle my project. So that's my main concern right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Helgastad. I live at 1208 Meadowbrook Drive. My property is going to be directly adjacent to this development. I'm not gonna go through or reiterate what everybody just, what the former people just said. They had a lot of the points that I wanna make. Obviously, I'm opposed to it. My first reason why I'm opposed to it is that I think it's gonna negatively impact my biggest asset or my biggest, or my wife and I's biggest investment, which is our home. Currently, at the Phase 3, they could fit, what another gentleman just said, is that they could fit three property, you basically fit three houses in the width of our lot. That's, which I'm obviously not in favor, and please forgive me, I am not, I'm not accustomed to public speaking and address. I do have a question, though, and this goes back to the TIF. Firstly, I'm not opposed to a TIF. I think a TIF can be a very useful tool to a community. What I do have a problem with is why use a, why does this organization and this developer need TIF money from the people of Watertown? Why does somebody that's on Churchill Lane, Mary Street, Schuman, why do they have to be on the hook for somebody else's development? We've never asked that from anybody else, and I think that's an inappropriate use of the, of the TIF rule. Thank you very, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Will Runkie, 1406 Fairfield Court. I'm coming here today because I do oppose the project as it is currently laid out for, I'm completely opposed to any multifamily. It's not within the character of our neighborhood, and I do feel it will negatively impact my property values and everybody's here as well. Further to that, the use of a TIF seems unusual and not necessary. If the developer believes that this development will make a bunny, let him take the risk and develop himself or whomever, whatever consortium is doing so. Also, for all the points everybody else said, I also agree with them. Thus, I am strongly opposed to this development as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Aronki, and I am Will's wife. I live at 1406 Fairfield Court, and I am also opposed to this for many reasons, as to what everybody else has said. It's just not good use of anything, to be honest with you. It's not gonna be good for our neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you're allowed to comment.
Hello, I'm Corey Kreiser, 77 Brackenridge Street, Mayville. I am one of the applicants, and I will not go into the details around the project plans regarding the density or TIF explicitly, because my understanding is the scope of this vote is really just related to the use, not the actual project plans. The density that's being proposed is less than what the zoning request would allow, about 25% left. The proposed TIF is a pay-go TIF with no upfront expenditures from the city. All of that risk would be bayered by the development. We feel it's an appropriate use because of the similar multifamily zoning directly to the south of the property and to the north of the property that are existing, due to its proximity to Highway 16 and the hospital. It's our understanding that this, you know, since the plans for the school have been scrapped, there haven't been any other formal plans brought to change the use, so we have one that we believe is actionable, and we think it would be a good use for, to provide additional housing options for the city and be beneficial to all of Watertown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone also like to comment?
My name is Jill Slusher. I live at 1212 Meadowbrook Drive. My property is also adjacent to the development. I am opposed to both projects or to both proposals. I think it would, I agree with everything that everybody else had said, except for the last gentleman. I just think if you just keep it to single-family housing, that would be beneficial to the neighborhood, but putting in multifamily housing, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Zastro, 1204 Meadowbrook Drive. You know, I had some stuff written down here, but I'm just gonna keep it short. I'm opposed to the multifamily. I appreciate, you know, this gentleman's looking to invest in the Watertown community. However, I think, you know, that parcel on Alworth Street is prime for single-family residential housing. That's, I think that's what we all feel is best for that, that area. I don't know if there's another area, another parcel in Watertown that's ready to be developed into single-family housing like that is, you know, a, 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 single-family homes, homeownership, that's what makes a city prosper. You know, a developer comes in and, and he'll make money, and he'll go back to Mayville, and he'll, he'll spend it there. You have people that own homes, they're making an investment in our community. They're gonna reap the appreciation, they're gonna reap the benefits from that, and they're gonna spend that in Watertown, and that's gonna benefit Watertown long-term. So I think we really need to look at what's best long-term, not at, hey, we've got something that's gonna create tax revenue short-term, because we all pay a lot of taxes as well, single-family homes, so I'm opposed to rezoning it. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Yes.
Katie Vanderlinden, N8071 High Road, Watertown. I have sat through three strategic planning sessions with the school board, of which we are declining in numbers. I have sat through a Jefferson County Public Housing Coalition meeting, in which it is very clear that single-family homes are not the answer to how people are looking, to what's being needed for our families, for what's needed for growth in Jefferson and Dodge Counties. People are not looking to buy the homes that many of us have, and I'm sorry to say that, but the reality is, most people can't afford them. And so if you want people in this town, and you want your school to grow, and you want things to change, you have to look and be creative. I moved here from Madison. Madison is not building single-family homes. Madison is building lots of multi-level, multifamily, and Madison is growing by leaps and bounds. They are bringing in people, they are bringing in money, they are bringing in different ways and different ideas. So I honestly, I'm not, I have not looked at this proposal. I don't live anywhere near this area, but I'm sure it will impact all of us. But as a person, as a taxpayer, as a person whose kids go to this school, and as a way to look at the housing needs, we have to be more creative. And I think had there been single-family homes, it would have already been done. I mean, the reality is, the property has been there. So, I mean, I don't know that this is necessarily the answer, and I don't know how the funding should be, and that's, you know, not necessarily how I look at things, but we have to be more creative, and I appreciate that this is at least an option, something to think about and something to look at, as people really aren't looking to be homeowners, because most people can't afford them anymore.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heidi Ziffel. I live at 1416 Stone Ridge Drive. I am opposed to rezoning this. I think a good point is, yes, Watertown does need multifamily, but I also think that we need to look at, is this the place for it? Is that the location? We have to think about the homes that are there, and people are building homes in our, in our neighborhood yet. It's quickly developing, so I just don't think this is the spot for it. I think we need housing, just not there. I think also that, I don't know if people realize that, there are homeowners that are panicking, they feel their property values will go down, and they're talking of selling. And so we have to look at the people that have been there for, I've been there for 23 years, and we have to look at, okay, so now they're gonna sell, and if new owners are coming in, and they're gonna find out this huge project is there, they're not gonna wanna buy. It's gonna drop what we can sell our homes, can sell for. So we have to look at, like someone said, the long-term effect, how to serve the people there, how to serve Watertown, just not at that location. So I oppose the TIF, I oppose these two projects. And I also am concerned, too, I mean, like with, this is one thing, and I'm not as versed in any of these subjects, but our water pump station can be challenging the way it is. There's repeatedly, sometimes people saying, my water pressure's low, my water pressure's low. Well, how are they gonna hook into our subdivision? How, how are all these things going to be handled? And are we looking at safety also? We have, I don't know if anybody's thought of that, we have this huge, if it would rezone either way, single or multi. We have not a lot of access for families. I mean, if there are people walking to our Piggly Wiggly, are we looking at what's best to serve them? We have families with kids, there's no outlets of sidewalks to that area of businesses. So we have families and elderly people riding their electronic scooters and strollers, and moms and dads walking in the road. So if we're gonna plan for this, have we planned for other safety measures and how to expand that to areas? I'm just saying if it would go through that, I don't, I haven't heard anything about that. Safety is a huge issue there. We need a sidewalk put in there to accommodate if we have all this go-through people, people to be able to access the local businesses. So I am completely opposed to this, and I, I think, again, looking short-term versus long-term in already servicing the people that live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone remotely that would like to comment? Or anyone else in the room? Sure? Yeah?
I'm sorry, I'm not used to speaking like the other guy gentleman said, but the, the site plan was, for my project, was approved on July 27th, 2020. So if anybody, nobody knows about that, that's gonna be the one at 1225 North Fourth Street. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else that would like to comment? You sure can.
Hi, Tom Helgastad again. I just wanna retort to the last madam that made, pleaded for the, or made the case for multifamily and that nobody is buying multifamily, or nobody is buying single-family homes within the area. I respectfully disagree with that. I can cite that, in the five years I've moved into the community, I've seen one through street and two cul-de-sacs completed, along with several single-family homes that can't, seemingly cannot be built soon enough. To our neighbors to the south over in Johnson Creek, the community I used to be a part of, I have watched the development along I-94 explode. They just, I actually just helped with the construction of that school, and also within the communities of Lake Mills, Beaver Dam, Wapan, there is single-family homes going up all over the region. So not only do, there is a place, and I don't disagree that there isn't, that there is not a place, there's definitely a place for multifamily units, it's just in which setting and what zoning, and in our particular section, I don't believe it is, because it would, again, ruin the aesthetic and the original plan and intent of the District 1 area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, again, Will Runkie, 1406 Fairfield Court. Just like the previous gentleman, I have to respectfully disagree regarding the person who wanted, who said multifamily is where it's at, people can't afford new houses, new single-family houses. In our neighborhood that we live in, loose homes just developed, I'm, every single, basically every single lot on the backside of the hill that we live at. If there was no demand for single-family homes, that would not have occurred. So that, I think, flies directly against the fact that people cannot afford single-family homes, and that it's not something that, and that's not something that we should pursue. We should pursue the single-family homes and zoning residential, single-family at Alworth, the Alworth Division or plots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Corey Kreiser, 77 Brackenridge Street again. I just wanted to make one point I forgot to make before, which was during our last presentation, informational presentation to the Planning Commission, or Richard, the Common Council, we had provided analysis done by Tracy Cross and Associates, which is the consultant who's also helping on the west side development, and they did a study of southeast Wisconsin and looked at property values adjacent to multifamily development. I think some of them were at Lake Mills and some of the other adjacent communities, and their study found that property values actually increased at a higher rate than the rest of the city. Some of that is to be, because that's a newer part of town, but... Some of that is to be, because that's the newer part of town, but, um, and that study was provided to the city, it is public, it should be in that record, and that can be made available. And then lastly, I just reiterate that, you know, this, as I understand, this property's been for sale for a long time, um, over the last four years, it was one of the largest single-family housing booms of construction that this country's had in a while, and that property remained vacant and for sale. We have an actual plan to, uh, to create some increment and some housing options if, if approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on, on this public hearing? Or anyone remotely? Okay, I will close that public hearing and then those comments go back to the Plan Commission. Our next one is also a public hearing for thirteen ten Allworth Street. This is a proposed rezone from SR four, single-family to MR ten, multifamily residential. I will open that public hearing. If you'd like for us to mimic your comments over, if any, how about this, if anyone doesn't want us to apply your comments to both, see the clerk. Does that make, is that okay with everyone? All right. See a lot of shaking heads, you all are my witnesses to that. Anyone else though that would like to comment on this, on this one? Or anyone remotely? Okay, so again, Megan will just, the clerk will copy over those public hearing comments. Coming up, Mr. Walker. Yeah, yep, you sure can. Uh, and if you do not want her to, to copy them over to both, just see her after the meeting or shoot her an email if you don't wanna stick around for the whole meeting. Yes, sir.
I have Jeremy Walker, thirteen twenty-eight Meadowbrook Drive, I'm actually right next to Mary Rose Park. Um, I've actually been very busy at work the last months, and all of you have been, so I haven't been following this as much as I'd like to, but I just wanted to make a comment. I have an engineering degree, it's not in civil engineering, my wife does, but I moved in in May first of two thousand eight, and if you guys remember what happened in two thousand eight, I was working at John Deere trying to figure out how to keep the Rock River off of the John Deere property, and I moved in and water was a huge issue. All my neighbors had just ripped out all their carpeting around Windsor Circle, and I was going to Walmart at ten o'clock at night trying to keep a sump, a secondary sump pump, to keep my sump pump from killing my basement that I just bought, a mortgage that I never thought I'd have a mortgage that big. Now it doesn't seem as big fifteen years later, but again, I, I state that I'm concerned, I just wanna make sure, I just state from my vantage point, we have continued to have water, I don't believe the neighborhood was tiled correctly originally, and I, every time it rains hard like this last month, I'm in my basement checking to make sure water's not coming in, and I look at multifamily, I'm not opposed to multifamily, I don't necessarily want it in my backyard, but nobody really does. So my point is, is if we have lots of roofs, lots of concrete, and not enough water remediation, it's going not to, just to affect the new people that are coming into those houses and those condos that may not know how to manage a house property like some of us that have been doing it for years, but to me, it's gonna affect my property because I know the only path for that water to come off the hill is through my property, and it basically goes through that, um, gully behind my house, and I've seen the plans, and I don't think there's enough plan that I've seen to handle the water. And to me, I don't necessarily, like I said, I, I haven't really looked at the full plans, I just know I'm outside in the rain with an umbrella trying to get water off of my property, and I'm just looking at the amount of concrete and the amount of roofs that are gonna be there. I think that much density and that much surface area that's not absorbed, if you look out in that field the last month, it's been underwater a fair amount, and you see deer and you see other animals actually taking baths in that water, and now we're gonna put more concrete and more stuff. So I think having enough plan there to, to actually deal with that water and talk to some of the homeowners that have been dealing with it for fifteen years is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment? Or anyone else remotely? Okay, I will close that public hearing, and just because we don't normally get this many people at our meetings, I will mention this, it's okay to leave, most people do, we're not voting on anything at this meeting tonight. If there, there's typically a mass exodus of folks after a topic switches, and it's a normal thing, so don't feel guilty about it. Mr. Hoppenrath knows that, and he already left a long time ago, so. All right. Um, so again, we're not, yep, all right, go for it. We do have another, we do have another public hearing this evening, so, but I know Ms. Davis will keep you guys up to date, but there, there will be, uh, Plan Commission will be the next stop. Uh, we do have another public hearing, this one is for a Belinski development, uh, request to amend a portion of the Hunter Oaks Plan Unit Development to, and their general development plan. So I will open that public hearing, if anyone would like to comment.
Hi, I'm Jim Fro, and I live at fourteen oh five Oakland Avenue, right across from this to the south. I'm trying to figure out what Belinski is doing. It started out with stores over by the Chocolate Factory years ago, and then it went to, um, other arrangements, and now it was interesting to hear the topic going from multifamily to single-family to multifamily, and now we're on the West Side, he wants to go from multifamily, side-by-side condos, which coincides with what we live in the, um, whole area there, is mainly, um, side-by-side condos, two bedrooms, two baths, uh, two stalls, and all of a sudden, we're going from that to single-family, both on, south of us, up the hill towards the woods, and now to the north, all the way out to the Chocolate Factory. And I'm trying to figure out, you know, who's approving all this, or who's looking at this, and looking at the wat, you know, we talk about water problem, I gladly come over and give anybody a shower with the water that's coming out of my pump any day of the week right now. It's been pumping, uh, my neighbor Ron's been pumping, Mike's has been pumping all along there, and they told us when it was designed, that all that water would be taken care of, it would run down into the pond. Well, it's not. The city, whomever engineers, all designed it, and it doesn't work. Now they're working in an area that is marshland, swamp. I don't know if anybody's driven out by the Chocolate Factory lately, how much water is out there? It is tremendous. They're digging there right now on that corner of West and Hunter Oaks, and every time they dig, just more water comes up, 'cause to the west of them is a half a field full of water. So who's looking at this? Who's approving this of digging into a marshland and continuing to, gonna add to the problems, just as the other developers were talking about, to the water not being abated correctly? So that's one of the issues. Why is Belinski going from the multifamily to now a single-family? If you go down Belmont, currently Belmont, I'll call it on the south side, is mainly side-by-side condos, two bedrooms and so forth, mainly senior citizens. Now, directly across from them, and it wasn't that way in the plans last time that I recall, the homes or multi-unit facilities, we're gonna have a road to the north, now it looks like they're exiting onto Belmont. And so the traffic there, and now it's single families, and so that means just more traffic and, and so on. As you continue down Belmont, it was supposed to be a private drive going back in there, and they were supposed to exit, you know, as needed to the other, to the north or to the west. Well, now it's a circle, so you go in there, so what does that mean? Oakland and Belmont is the main entrance to a good portion of that area there. Again, this is, how do you call it, a senior citizen area, if you wanna call it that, but now you're gonna develop single families, and nothing wrong with that, but again, focus on the layout that you guys have put together. What, I, I just still can't understand what Belinski's doing. Why are we switching again? This is ridiculous. As they said, the traffic, the water, um, and then why the switch? What is he doing in relationship to that single family now? And what does it give? It provides a huge concentration of single families in a very small condensed area as compared to the side-by-side condos that were supposed to be developed in there the last time. So totally against this, um, and I hope you take that into consideration. Take the time to drive out there, look at that, and then take a swim, you know? Better yet.
Don't take a swim.
Better yet, bring your canoe. You could probably be out there.
It's not safe to go into floodwaters, sir.
Yeah, well, that's, that's up to you, I'm just suggesting, y'all.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Michelle Gearing, and I live at seven oh six Belmont Drive. I live right down the street from Jim. And we have a severe water problem in our neighborhood, and we are afraid, right now are, all of our houses have been underwater. We get some really good sunny days and it's quick, get out there, mow the lawn because, well, it's gonna rain and we won't be able to mow because we're underwater. What concerns me is building the houses behind the, our houses that we have right now. Where is the rainwater going to go? Right down into our backyards and into our homes. Belinski did not figure this out, everybody in that neighborhood, in the Hunter Oaks subdivision, has a water problem. And it's not good. So before any more houses get built, somebody needs to check into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment on this one, either in the room or, or virtually? All right, again, with this same thing with the, oh, yes, you'd have to go to the microphone. It's not your first public hearing, I suspect.
Well, I, I could be here for an hour based on what I heard.
That would, that.
The first.
It's like, that was the timer, the three-minute timer, Mr. Donovan.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, go for it.
My name is John Donovan, I'm Development Manager for Belinski Homes, and I'm gonna just take you through real quickly the, the, the change, uh, of the single-family from the condos to single-family. We have a lot of land back there still. Uh, we purchased this land in nineteen ninety-eight, we've redesigned it a couple times in the last five years since I've been working with Belinski. We're looking to take advantage and, with the city's help and everybody else's on an opportunity. The opportunity is, is there's a lot of employment that's coming to Jefferson County, and we feel there, if you talk to all the leaders in those cities and villages, they don't have enough housing. Um, we do have condominiums that are planned, that are all up on West, Western Avenue, there's fifty-four, there'll be fifty-four units there, and they will go all the way to the west. For this development, we're looking at smaller lots, we're, we're looking at the ability to bring the prices down, the pricing in single-family homeownership, I'm not speaking for Belinski right now, is out of control. It's very high. The problem in the, in most areas is we do not have enough people that are moving out of their existing homes to accommodate the amount of people that wanna buy. So we are, our range in Waukesha County is probably six hundred plus for a twenty-four-hundred square foot home on a quarter acre. People are buying them almost every week because there is no existing home for them to go out and purchase, and they are, understand the interest rates that are out there, and they are willing to buy and worry about the interest rates going down later so they can refinance. I believe that there is a equal balance between multifamily and single-family and condominiums. Uh, I believe that you need to, we, I think we've somewhat over-constructed, um, multifamily. We don't, I don't believe that that is the cure to our housing needs long-term, I believe it's single-family. So this proposal that we're trying to change here, it actually will improve the area because there is a pond out there that is not being utilized, it is within this area. Belinski did not own that land two years ago, and in order for us to develop, if it was condos or single-family there, we would have had to try and use an easement across some lands. So we purchased it back from the investors that bought it from a bank so that we could accommodate this single-family. The si, the single-family, uh, I've been in Jefferson, I've been in Fort Atkinson, I've been in Johnson Creek, I've been in Watertown, I've been all over, there is a need for affordable housing. Affordable housing to me right now is anything you can get under four hundred thousand. We are, we purchased some single-family lots in the city of Jefferson, five of them, and we didn't even get them to drywall and they were sold. They were three hundred and fifty thousand. There are families out there that are starving for trying to find affordable housing, they don't wanna live in apartments with their children, they wanna grow up in communities like Watertown and Jefferson and things of that nature, and this is an opportunity for everybody. This is an opportunity, we've been here twenty-five plus years, we would like to see this development completed. Your drainage will improve the more this parcel, I'm talking the whole development, gets developed, because that's what it's designed for, is to, i- is to, to build all of these single-family, all of these condos, and have the infrastructure in place, have the stormwater systems in place all over. The condominiums, we tried to solve some of the problems a couple years ago because of farmland, is just, it's much higher elevation, that's gonna be single families, that isn't even graded out there because it's still farmland. If that gets all completed, your drainage system should work in much better, it's all engineered, that's the way it's supposed to work. I will lastly say, this is a great opportunity for the city, this is an opportunity for other people to move here that are, will be working within a twenty-mile radius, and I hope you welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to comment?
Hi.
Hi.
Jim Fro, fourteen oh five. I, I'd really like to just contradict what he just said about there's a good plan here. And also the plan about going from multi-units to single-units, you know, I understand he is correct about that the need for single-family at affordable pricing is needed. That whole area that he was talking about, to the north of where I live, was supposed to be two-family. Well, when you think about that, two-family units, maybe three hundred thousand, a single-family is gonna be maybe four hundred thousand by the time they get done. So you're talking about a price difference of quite significant. So on top of that, all that area is again, the congestion and all driven down towards Oakland and Belmont. And so he kinda twisted it a little bit in respect of, there's pieces of it that are, like our units, ten buildings, twenty families, along Oakland and Belmont, but the rest of it before was gonna be the two condos, and now to the north of us is all gonna be single-family. And, and that's too much congestion and too much traffic coming in towards us. We're senior citizens. And so we need to make sure there's a good plan here, maybe another exit, another route or whatever, a- and so forth, but this is not a good plan for single-family here in the direction and the way it was laid out originally, was to be, I don't wanna say senior citizen area, but you need that too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to comment? All right, I will close that public hearing, same thing goes here, we aren't taking any action here tonight, uh, these comments will go back to the Plan Commission. If you'd like to step out before our rousing, uh, audit report from our auditor who's had to, who's been sitting through with us, you're more than welcome to, otherwise hang out for a little bit and we'll get to that. So, before that though, we have reports, um, you have the Housing Authority minutes from May sixteen. So before that, though, we have reports. You have the Housing Authority Minutes from May sixteenth, Site Plan from June twenty-fourth, Plan Commission from June twenty-fourth, and Public Works from June twenty-fifth. Anybody have any comments on those? Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to refer to the Site Plan Review Minutes of June twenty-fourth. Kind of ties in to the last public hearing we just had, which was the amendment to the Hunter Oaks Planned Unit Development. And in the Site Plan Review Minutes, the question had been asked, when was the city going to obtain ownership of Area I? Area I is at the top of the hill. It is the intended community park. And we have been anticipating the transfer of that land from Belinski to the city for over twenty years. And the response at Site Plan Review was that the ownership transfer would be discussed in a future phase. Now, I'm not talking about the development of the park. I'm talking about the ownership of the park. And I know that the specific amendment doesn't deal with that area of the planned unit development. But I think that it is very important for us to begin to push for the transfer of that land to the city. There will be a number of opportunities where that can be brought into discussion with the developer. But there has always been an excuse, time after time, under the earlier planned unit development. There were all manner of reasons why that wasn't transferred. And then there was the new planned unit development, and numerous phases remain to be completed. But it was never the anticipation that that community park and the land for its future development would be the last thing transferred, that all of the profits would be attained through this extensive development project. And the city just continues to wait year after year after year for the transfer of that land, which was a fundamental agreement over twenty years ago. And what I am simply bringing up is, first of all, I appreciate the efforts by the Site Plan Review Committee to raise that. But the answer is totally unsatisfactory, that the ownership interest in that area, that future community park, will be discussed at some future point where some future phase is in question. I think what we need is a specific commitment from Belinski for when that is going to be transferred to the city. It is key to our future parks program in the community. Obviously, we have an interest in trying to set the timeline for the development of that park. It's the highest area in the entire city of Watertown. Would be a beautiful view, has all manner of attraction for the city. Of course, that was the case over twenty years ago. And what I'm simply doing is asking the Plan Commission and the city to begin to make meaningful efforts to get this into a state of final negotiation, that this land will be transferred to the city, and that issues relating to future development can then be discussed within the scope of the city, and this tremendous asset can begin to come to pass.
I will follow up with you this week because your points are well-taken, and these minutes aren't reflective because we didn't discuss it in this meeting, but we do have those benchmarks lined up on what would happen, what needs to happen in order for us to take ownership of the land. They're not in these minutes because we didn't discuss those specifics in this particular meeting, but we do have those lined up. It's, part of it is the construction of that parking area right now that this space would really just be something we have to own and maintain, but there's no accessibility to it. So the requirement of that little parking area, and then there's a couple of other requirements around them completing some stormwater stuff as well. Like, we, we would be required, and I don't wanna speak too far out of turn. I just, I'll say this, Mr. Smith, I know we've had the discussions, and I know engineering has a couple of benchmarks that need to be hit. So I will follow up with you directly on those, so that you have that list as well. But I'm on your page. I agree with you entirely. Anybody else on any of the minutes? Okay. As, as promised, it is time for a rousing presentation, really setting you up big, Andy. You got, from, I kid. It is time for, really and truthfully, a very important presentation from our audit firm, Baker Tilly. Mark, did you need to provide any comments or just turning it over to Andy?
We're good. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. So thank you so much for your time this evening, and we are gonna talk about the 2023 audit reports. For purposes of this meeting, I'm gonna spend most of my time talking through the 2023 Financial Highlights Handout. Did everybody?
Yes, it's in the packet, and I'll pull it up here too.
Okay, thanks. But before we get there, just a couple high-level comments on the formal audit reports themselves. No need to pull those up. But your financial statements, the opinion, the auditors', independent auditors' report is in the front section of the financial statements. And we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on all of the opinion units of the city, which is otherwise known as a clean opinion and the highest level of assurance that we're able to give. So that is good news. The other formal audit report that we issue along with the financial statements is the Reporting and Insights Document for the 2023 audit. If you're familiar with this document, this will look very similar to last year. It is largely made up of required communications. If you're not as familiar with this document, I would encourage you to take a look through it. It does give some information on some of the audit scoping that we do, where we have our areas of focus, lays out responsibilities related to the audit. As a reminder, it does have internal control matters section that starts on page six in here. We do issue a material weakness over financial reporting that has to do with us preparing your financial statements and material adjustments being identified as part of the audit process. That is very, very common for municipalities of your size with staffing of your size. So not something that you necessarily need to remedy, but something that you should just be aware of. And then happy to go through any of that report in more detail or answer questions if there are any. Otherwise, was gonna just mention, you know, certainly if there are matters, questions, comments, concerns that come up during the year, you are all welcome to reach out to any of us on the audit team, myself included. Our contact information is within that report. So getting into the numbers, thanks for pulling that up. Starting here with the general fund, that is your primary operating fund of the city and your fund balance, we are looking at your equity. So it's what's left over simplified terms, your assets minus your liabilities. On this chart, we've got mapped out, the 2022 balances are in black, and then the 2023 balances are in blue. Total fund balance for the general fund increased to just under seven point nine million for 2023. There are a few different categories of fund balance. Non-spendable fund balance increased slightly to about three hundred and fifty-two thousand. It's largely made up of prepaid items, so you can't use those funds to spend on something else. They've already been spent. Assigned fund balance of about one point five million. That is earmarked for 2024 budget items and your tax equivalent from the water utility. And so those have been earmarked, though if you wanted to change those earmarks, you are welcome to do that. You have flexibility to do that. And then the unassigned balance of just over six million dollars at the end of the year, we'll look at that closer on the next page, but that has not been earmarked for any specific purposes. So how did you get from where you were at 2022 to 2023? We've got the summarized income statement below the chart. I like to start in the middle here with your final budget because that's your plan for the year. So you had planned for a net loss in the general fund of about eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, and your actual results were a net income of about a hundred and twenty-one thousand. If you're interested in the details of, of kind of what makes that up, what are the different variances, those start on the financial statements, page fifty-four. From a high level, on the revenue side, investment income was up over your plan. We've seen this across the communities that we work with, with favorable market conditions in 2023. And then on the expenditure side, savings in multiple departments, and that was somewhat offset by a transfer out to create that new grants fund. So overall, very good financial results and certainly well ahead of your plan.
One more time to thank Mark for his interest income earnings. I did wanna point out on this page, we, you know, we as a finance committee, from time to time, do get, you know, scrutinized for the planned fund balance usage. And I think it's really important to validate what I always say is, we plan to use it and we typically don't. And this is a great example of that. Not only did we not use it, but we actually grew the fund balance by over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And Mark made some interest earnings on top of it. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thanks.
So let's talk about that fund balance.
Yeah, so now we are looking at that six million dollar of unassigned fund balance, and we're comparing that to your budgeted expenditures in the general fund because that is what your policy has. Your policy range is a target range of twenty to thirty percent. You can see at the end of 2023, consistent with the last few years, you're slightly above your policy range at thirty-one point five percent. Really, really healthy balance. There, nothing to be concerned about. Always good to be on the high side if we're gonna be on a side of the range. You know, could you assign some more funds to bring that back in line with your policy? You could consider doing that in the future, but, but really, again, a healthy reserve balance. I have included some comparative metrics. That's what those blue dots are. So for other communities that we work with in, in Wisconsin with similar population range, their percentages are mapped out there in blue. So slightly higher than where you are, but that, you know, they could have different policies, different goals, so that is okay. Moving on to talk about general obligation debt. On this chart, we've got a couple things mapped out here. The black line is your state statutory debt limit. As a reminder, that's five percent of your equalized value. So since 2021, you can really see that that is taking off in an upward direction. So that is, that's great news. The line on the red, that is your general obligation debt outstanding. You can see that that has remained actually pretty flat, but decreased slightly at the end of 2023. So you have just over thirty point nine, just under thirty point nine million dollars in general obligation debt outstanding at the end of 2023. So that margin between the two is definitely growing. That said, we know that there was additional borrowings in 2024 in the spring, so that's not factored into this chart. But, but obviously, you've got some room in your capacity for that. And then below the chart, just a reminder that you do have additional revenue debt, which is not included in the, the chart because that will be repaid with revenues from the utility funds, and so that is not gonna be repaid with tax levy, so not factored into your debt limit. If you do like data, there is a link there at the bottom of that page to take you to the Wisconsin Policy Forum.
Ms. Davis, that link's made for you.
Thank you.
So then moving along here, we are still talking about debt, but we're talking about what you're spending in principal and interest in those governmental funds. This does not include your utility funds. We compare that debt service to your non-capital expenditures. We remove the capital expenditures because they can throw the ratio all out of whack. But for 2023, twenty-one point five percent is your ratio. Slight increase in principal and interest spending 2023 compared to 2022. But overall, looking at sort of the period of the last five years, the relatively stable metric there and right in line with some of those peer metrics that we've included there on this chart as well. Page five, we are looking at your water utility. As a reminder, your water utility is regulated by the PSC of Wisconsin. No new rates for 2023, actually, no new rates since 2017, I believe. So you can see that top line, your operating revenue is really relatively flat. Expenditures decreased slightly from 2022, but overall, pretty steady revenue and expenditures, both flat to prior year. Underneath the chart, we've got your unrestricted cash reserves is what those are. Five point seven million at the end of 2023. So if you weren't gonna collect any more revenue, which obviously you still will, you would have twelve months of revenues in your cash reserves. So that is healthy. We look for a minimum of, of three months generally. You've got debt coverage requirements for this utility because of your revenue debt. No issues there. You met the required coverage. And then the last piece of information here is your investment in capital. Obviously, with your utilities, you've got a huge investment in that utility plant. This is trying to show you how much of that is equity funded versus how much is debt funded, twenty-four percent debt funded. Really, I look at this and see a healthy ratio there. Anything under fifty percent is generally where you wanna be. Moving to your wastewater utility, similar information for this utility, though this one is not regulated by the PSC. Again, no new rates here. I think 2017 was the last time you had new rates for that utility as well. So you can see your revenues are flat, a slight uptick in your operating expenses. But your margin, your operating income, was about one point three million for this year. Unrestricted cash reserves, you're up over a year, so again, that's a healthy balance. No debt coverage requirements here. There's no debt in this fund. So that last chart shows that's all equity funded as well. And now moving lastly to your stormwater utility. Here, your operating revenues and operating expenses, we're pretty close to break even this year. Actually, a twenty-two thousand dollar operating loss in this fund. This is one, I would consider revisiting this one and making sure that, you know, long-term, you want to make sure that your rates are covering the activities of the fund and this fund remains self-sustaining. So you do have healthy cash reserves in this fund and no debt, which gives you some flexibility. But, but long-term, operationally, operationally, you wanna make sure that you're staying in the black. So before I open it up for questions, just also wanna thank Mark for, and team, for all their efforts really to the audit. I know there's a lot of information that we request of you, and just really appreciate you and your team's assistance with that so that we can provide this report to all of you.
I'll just add, on the stormwater utility, we consciously chose to spend down some fund balance on some larger capital items. So that was a cognizant choice. We do still have seventeen and a half months of operating expenses on hand, but Andy's point is a good one. You know, we need to, we haven't revisited rates in a minute for some of these utilities, and whether, we do need to revisit them with some frequency so that it's not a larger percentage when the time does come for a rate adjustment. Any questions? Yes?
Just a quick one. So based on the expenses that we did related specifically to stormwater, had we not made those, that, that gap would've been consistent with the rest of them essentially, if I understand you correctly.
I, I don't wanna speak to the gap because I'm not the auditor, but I know that that's what we did, is we, we used some fund balance to make larger capital purchases. Do you wanna grab a mic and answer that better than I can?
You'll see that because your income and expense both happened to hit at the same time. So just because we're using fund balance doesn't mean that you would be able to prevent those lines from happening. The expenses do grow, and the reason for that is to be able to use the, that fund balance. So we're tapping in to fund balance instead of the bill.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Sure. Mr. Smith, did I see your hand up?
Yes. I appreciate this very, very helpful presentation, both tonight and in the inclusion of all of this information for us in the packet. One of the things I wanted to. One of the things I wanted to ask about is you have a section on page three of your report which is headed Debt Management Policy, and it indicates that the city does not have a debt management policy, which obviously doesn't mean that there's not a debt management focus or effort ongoing continually to keep our debt as well structured as it obviously is. But what I'm wondering is, this apparently is a part of the audit report because a lot of communities do have a formal debt management policy. And assuming that's true, should we be working in the direction of a formal written debt management policy?
I would say as a community of your size, it wouldn't be unusual to have a policy. I think it helps you all to, to figure out where you should be when you're making decisions about should we do this project, should we not, should we take on more debt? Just helps provide you with a, a framework or, or somewhere to shoot for, similar to having a fund balance policy in place.
Right, and we've had a fund balance policy which has been very important for our decision-making for quite some period of time. Well, when you do audits for municipalities and you find a community like Watertown that doesn't have a debt management policy, do you typically recommend in the audit report that we establish a debt management policy?
I would say that is up to this group to decide if that's something that's important to you. Certainly I could provide you with some examples. There's a couple of different ways to go about it. You can talk about sort of artificially lowering your state statutory debt limit to something less than that, or you can look at it in terms of how much you want to spend on debt in your governmental funds, so, or you can do both. So, you know, happy to provide some other examples of policies, but I guess the ultimate decision of whether or not you want to have that would be up to this group.
Okay, well, I guess I would just, I'm raising it because it would seem to me to be a good thing for us to think through and establish a debt management policy, and perhaps that's something that the finance committee can take a look at.
I already emailed Mark and told him. We have considered it in the past, and the reason we haven't set one is we've, we've been, I'm not saying it's like a great reason to not revisit it. The thought process in the meetings I've been in, and I don't even remember if it's when I was mayor or if it was when I was on the council, but it was around, well, what if we have something that's really necessary? Then we have to get an exception to a policy in order to make the expense. And I think at least in my 10 or 11 years, we've just stayed in that range, kind of like how Andrew just spoke to, like, we've done one without formalizing it. But we'll take your examples. Mark, I'm sure I saw him write down, so I'm sure what I emailed, he wrote down, and we'll bring some stuff to finance and have a, have a discussion.
Well, I think it's obvious that there is a very, very excellent focus on debt management, and I think probably while everybody looks at the fund balance portion of the audit and things of that type, I think one of the most important and most favorable of all of this information is our debt to capacity ratio, which has dramatically improved in the last two years, and those things don't happen without good debt management. And I just thought it would be a, a good thing for the city if we at least considered having a formal policy.
Yep, agree. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Yes?
It was going to be two, now it's three. I, I do remember we talked about debt management policy last year, and so I definitely want to dig up some, some notes on, on that piece. I was also looking at, at page three and of, as, you know, working, working with the Alton Smith and some other folks back to 2017 when we were looking at, I think a ratio that was north of 50% or so back there. I mean, our ratio was basically almost dropped and dropped and dropped and dropped. And that's essentially where when we talk about looking at the, the capital projects and the capacity for the city to continue to invest in some of the things that we're going to probably need in the upcoming years. One of the biggest ones, I keep circling of course, is, you know, the renovations of City Hall to a couple of million dollars. I, I don't want us to be that afraid of what we're stepping into. I think there's a great deal of capacity. I think this is a fantastic story for the city to be able to express, we've got that much capacity, thanks to the efforts of, you know, decades at, at this point in terms of, of councils and leadership. But we're definitely headed in the right direction, but it also means that we shouldn't be that afraid to, you know, continue to invest in the community. I guess that was more of a comment than a question. But I do have a question on page four for the auditor, and one, one of the numbers that hops around a little bit there is one of the comps for other cities, and actually surprised me that we were, our line didn't move very much, but it's like the, the average popped around a bit, you know, 25, 24, 29, 23. What do you make of the, the debt service popping around like that?
I don't know if I would read too much into that, you know, I can, I'm not sure how many communities off the top of my head are making up the population of this, so if, I would guess somewhere around 20 communities. So it could be, you know, that either, sometimes what happens is a community moves into a different population range and that can kind of skew the data a little bit. You could have somebody that had a big balloon payment due in a, in a specific year where they were paying off more than they typically would. So I guess those are really trying to give you just a, a better picture of, you know, kind of where are you falling, but I guess I wouldn't try to read into that too much.
Anybody else on this topic? All right, thanks Andy.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, let me get us back to Zoom here. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the accounts payable. Does anyone have any questions on the accounts? All right, then let's move to miscellaneous business. You have the payroll summary from June 12th to 25th and cash and investment from June 30th. Anything on either of those? All right, then let's move to licenses. You do have in your packet the licensing memo from the clerk. That takes us to our, our first license. This is an action item for, an application for a Class A malt and liquor license for Vam United doing business, Incorporated doing business as Watertown Mart located at 330 Summit Avenue. This is the former PNJ Enterprises doing business as Watertown BP Mart. Is there a motion for this one? Motion by Mr. Blenky, second by Mr. Smith. And Megan, there were conditions with this one, correct? Have they satisfied those?
This one was just a surrender of the current license.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments, you guys? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is an application for a temporary Class B beer and temporary Class B wine license for the Marine Corps League Arrow Park Annual Picnic on August 24th. Mr. Smith?
For the approval of the temporary Class B beer and wine license for the Marine Corps League.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Mouldenhauer. Any comments or questions from anyone? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is an application for a temporary Class B beer and temporary Class B wine license for St. Henry's Congregation Catholic Church picnic event on Sunday, August 18th. Is there a motion for this one?
I move for the approval of the temporary Class B beer and wine license for St. Henry's Church.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Bartz. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is a permanent premise amendment application for the Drafty Cellar located at 110 South Third. If I remember, this one did have conditions of the fire inspection and a fence. Is there a motion for that with those conditions? Motion by Mr. Blenky, second by Mr. Bartz. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
On the licensed premise amendment application, the hours requested are business hours. But then when I read the code, there does seem to be a limit to the hours. It says item number seven. Outdoor sales area shall not be open for the sale, service, or consumption of alcohol before 10:00 a.m., and then it later goes on to say after 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday. So is that a good point of clarification, just of understanding that there are hours that this cannot be open that could be during business hours?
Yes, that was discussed with the applicants and the code provided.
Okay. Yep, good point, though. Anybody else on this one? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You guys got a nice meeting to sit through just for that one. Thank you. Our next is an application for a temporary premise amendment application for Erin Trader Run and Errands. This is for her annual St. Jude's fundraiser on July 28th and August 3rd with a rein date of August 4th. This one had a condition around some fencing, is that correct?
Yes, and I did talk to Erin and she added the fencing and forgot to cross off no fencing in that.
So we'll just do it still with that condition of fencing, though. Okay. Is there a motion for anyone with?
Sure. I'd make a motion that we approve the premises amendment. And did you say that it was still appropriate for us to condition this on the east boundary fencing?
I think so, yep.
Okay, I'll make that part of the, of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, with a second by Mr. Mouldenhauer. Any discussion from anyone? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is to take action on an application for an operator's license for Megan Fileto. This is a recommended denial from the licensing board based on category five.
We have one more for approval prior to the denial?
On my agenda, I have Megan first and then Carissa second. In the packet, it had Carissa first and Megan second, so I'm just taking the agenda order.
Well, then on the Megan Fileto application, I would make a motion that that be denied.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Blenky. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the recommended denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, our next is an application for an operator license for Carissa Sturwald-Finch. This was being presented as a, a recommended approval from the licensing board. Is there a motion on this one? Mr. Smith?
Make a motion that we approve this operator's license?
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Bartz. Megan, do you want to just provide a little context?
So the recommended approval for this one was based on the conviction date of the category one offense being eight months shy of the five-year look, lookback, and no other convictions from the applicant that would fall under any other licensing guideline for denial.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from anyone? I'll, oop, or who was it? Yes, Mr. Blenky.
I would like to add that this individual has seemingly done a fantastic job in turning her life around and really to the licensing board made a very good plea, and her employer also gave a, a very solid recommendation for this license approval.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, very good. Let's move to resolutions. Our first is a resolution to modify the 2024 Fund One budget. This is here from me and the finance committee, excuse me, it's exhibit 9629. Ms. Davis?
I move for exhibit 9629.
Thank you. Motion by Davis, second by Mr. Bartz. Questions or comments from anyone? Megan?
Davis? Lampy? Board? Bartz? Blenky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mouldenhauer? Motion passed nine to zero.
Very good. Next is exhibit 9630. This is a resolution to amend the 2024 TID four budget, again from me and the finance Mr. Lampy?
I would so move to approve.
Is that a second, Ms. Davis? Very good. Motion by Lampy, second by Davis. Comments or questions for anyone? Megan?
Lampy? Board? Bartz? Blenky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mouldenhauer? Davis? Motion passed nine to zero.
Very good. And then I believe these next three are to accommodate that budget amendment you just did. So this first is exhibit 9631. This is a resolution to approve change order number one to the 2024 Obitumina servicing contract with Payne and Dolan for $168,808.25. Very specific, Mr. Board and Public Works.
Hey, that's what they gave us.
I know.
I will move to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Board, second by Mr. Bartz. Any discussion from anyone? Megan?
Board? Bartz? Blenky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mouldenhauer? Davis? Lampy? Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is exhibit 9632. This is a resolution to approve change order number one to the Route and Crack Filling Contract with Denler for $27,984.02. Again, Mr. Board and Public Works.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Board, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Any discussion? Megan?
Board? Bartz? Blenky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mouldenhauer? Davis? Lampy? Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, Megan. Next is exhibit 9633. This is a resolution to approve change order number one to the pavement marking contract with Century Traffic for $9,009. Again, from Mr. Board and Public Works.
And you will note that that's a round number.
I did note that. Is that a motion, Mr. Board? Thank you. Motion by Board, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Megan?
Board? Bartz? Blenky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mouldenhauer? Davis? Lampy? Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you. Our last exhibit is exhibit 9634. This is a resolution to award the contract for construction of streambank protection for the east side of Tivoli Island to Jarry Hep Excavating for $169,000. Again, Mr. Board and Public Works. Mr. Lampy?
I move to approve this resolution 9634.
Motion by Lampy, was that a second? Second by Mr. Bartz. Any questions or comments? Megan?
Lampy? Board? Bartz? Blenky? Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Mouldenhauer? Davis? Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you. We do have another opportunity for comments from those in the room or attending remotely. All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Mouldenhauer, seconded by Ms. Davis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.